So, thank you. Thank you for taking the time to join us this evening for this important forum with candidates to represent San Jose City Council District 3. I'm Regina Celestin-Williams. I am the Executive Director of SB at Home and the SB at Home Action Fund, and we are proud to be hosting this forum tonight. We would like to remind everyone that SB at Home works for a future where all Santa Clara County residents have a safe, stable, and affordable home, and that San Jose City Council's constituents include all San Jose residents, both housed and unhoused. And I ask everyone to be respectful of that. So, before we begin, I'd like to take a moment and thank our co-hosts. Our forum tonight is co-hosted by some wonderful community partners, the Black Leadership Kitchen Cabinet, the Billy D. Frank LGBTQ+ Community Center, California YMB, Destination Home, Green Belt Alliance, Housing Choices Coalition, the Law Foundation of Silicon Valley, LEED Filipino, Momentum for Health, the San Jose Silicon Valley NAACP, Silicon Valley Community Foundation, Silicon Valley Council of Nonprofits, South Bay YMB, Student Homeless Alliance, Streets for People, The United Way Bay Area, Urban Environmentalists, the Vietnamese-American Roundtable, and YMB Action. Wow. So grateful for all of these, all of these partners. Oh, and I'm realizing that I neglected to introduce our interpreters tonight. So, I just want to apologize, and I appreciate your patience and your grace as we pivot to, of course, our interpreters, because we're offering live interpretation in multiple languages, both Spanish and Vietnamese. So, I'd like each of our interpreters to invite you to their respective audio channels. So first is our Spanish interpreter, Anna Rueda de Villalas.
Good afternoon. Hola, buenas tardes. Yo soy Anna Vidalas y voy a estar dando la interpretación simultánea al español. Si ustedes gustan escuchar en español, ustedes tienen que irse aquí al pequeño icono mundial donde dice "interpretación", van, aprietan su idioma de preferencia al español, y está la opción de "mute original audio", y no. Si ustedes lo dejan abierto, van a escuchar al intérprete a un 80% y al ponente a un 20%. Si lo cierran, solo van a escuchar al intérprete. Si ustedes están en un móvil o en un iPad, ustedes pueden agregarse a la interpretación dándole aquí a los tres puntitos donde dicen "more", "language interpretation", y eligen su idioma de preferencia. Muchas gracias.
Thank you. And now, one of our Vietnamese interpreters, Kian Trong.
Xin chao. Chúng tôi sẽ cung cấp bản dịch tiếng Việt trong sự kiện này. Để nghe thông dịch tiếng Việt, vui lòng nhìn trên màn hình của quý vị để tìm nút "interpretation". Trước đó, quý vị có thể phải nhấp vào nút "more", sau đó, quý vị sẽ thấy nút "interpretation", vui lòng chọn Vietnamese cho tiếng Việt. Xin cảm ơn. Thank you.
Okay, great. So, I am going to do the welcome again to make sure that all of our community members here and fully understand the welcome that we had today. So, I am Regina Celestin-Williams, the Executive Director of SB at Home and the SB at Home Action Fund. So excited to be here tonight, hosting the San Jose City Council District 3 Candidate Forum. And we're proud to be hosting this forum. We'd like to remind everyone that SB at Home works for a future where all Santa Clara County residents have a safe, stable, and affordable home, and that San Jose City Council's constituents include all of San Jose's residents, both housed and unhoused. So I ask everyone to be respectful of that. I'd also like to recognize all of our partners again, just to make sure that we're able to hear and receive all of this great community partnership. So, the Black Leadership Kitchen Cabinet, the Billy D. Frank LGBTQ+ Community Center, California YMB, Destination Home, Green Belt Alliance, Housing Choices Coalition, the Law Foundation of Silicon Valley, LEED Filipino, Momentum for Health, the San Jose Silicon Valley NAACP, Silicon Valley Community Foundation, Silicon Valley Council of Nonprofits, South Bay YMB, Student Homeless Alliance, Streets for People, The United Way Bay Area, Urban Environmentalists, the Vietnamese-American Roundtable, and YMB Action. Okay, enough of me. It's my pleasure to introduce our moderator for tonight's forum, Louis Hansen, reporter for the San Jose Mercury News.
Thanks Regina. Appreciate the introduction. I'm Lou Hansen. I cover housing for the Mercury and East Bay Times. And it's my pleasure to be here. And tonight, we're honored with two candidates for San Jose City Council, District 3 Downtown. Our candidates are Joanna Rao and Irene Smith. We had two other candidates who are looking forward to participating, but Elizabeth Chen Hale and Omar Torres, who over the last 24 hours unfortunately came down with severe stomach bugs. So, we're sorry to not have them here tonight, but we're hoping to be able to get their voices heard sometime in the future. So, for tonight, let's review the rules and expectations for this forum. We'll hear an opening statement from each candidate, and then we'll move into a Q&amp;A discussion where we'll get to chew on the issues a little bit more. We'll have some long answers and some rapid-fire questions. And then finally, we'll hear a closing statement from the two candidates. Our candidates have seen the questions beforehand, so they have prepared. And for each question, we will have a time limit. It will be strictly enforced, but I don't think that should be a problem tonight. We're asking our candidates not to critique each other or engage with the other fellow candidates. We'd like this to be an opportunity to discuss the issues for the San Jose population. And all the candidates will have an opportunity to answer each of the questions. So, I'd like to begin with Irene Smith and offer her an opening statement for one minute, and that will be followed by Joanna Rao with a one-minute opening statement. Thanks.
Thank you, Lou, and thank you to everyone here. It's so unfortunate not to have our other folks here, but I think it's good for Joanna and I to be here. Housing is the number-one issue for San Jose, and it's much more important for D3. Our current model, our strategy, is too expensive and it's too slow. San Jose housing is a big failure. Now, it's complex, and it's difficult with a lot of stakeholders, and they have legitimate voices. We have residents and developers, renters, unhoused, historically oppressed communities, city, county, NPOs, and owners. Housing is our most complex issue, and what we need to do to fix it is collaboration. I have those skills. As a rent-controlled housing provider for 33 years, I know firsthand about the expense of housing. And as a founder of a small business in mediation and collaboration, I have the hard-won experience to bring different opinions together and create a workable win-win solution for housing in D3. Thank you.
Thanks Irene. Joanna?
Thank you so much. Hi Irene, and thank you all for having me here tonight. My name is Joanna Rao. I'm running to be the next City Council Member of District 3, because I'm a working mom who wants to raise happy kids in a clean, safe, and fun San Jose like I enjoyed as a kid. I'm an attorney. I've been a professional negotiator for the last 15 years. It's my job to bring people and organizations together, to overcome differences, to solve complicated problems. And that's exactly what our housing crisis is right now. I'm not a professional politician. I don't have entrenched or extreme views. I'm not interested in fighting. I'm interested in working together within the city, between our city, our county, our nonprofits, to come to solutions together. I've been endorsed by Mayor Licardo, the League of Conservation Voters, and the Santa Clara County Association of Realtors, because they know that I can find solutions that work for everyone. I'll bring my negotiating expertise to City Hall so we can address these big issues like housing that are facing our district. And I'm the only candidate with the proven skills to get everyone to stop pulling in different directions and start pulling together in the same direction. Thank you so much for having me.
Thanks Joanna. We'll move on to our Q&amp;A part of the session. Each candidate will again have one minute to answer each question. Joanna, we'll start with you first time on the first question. As a new City Council member, you'll be asked to vote on San Jose's housing element, a document required by state law. It's a little bit wonky, but it lays out a plan for addressing the city's housing needs for the next eight years. In the housing element, San Jose will have to plan for 35,000 new affordable homes, and also show that the city has enacted policies and plans to make this feasible. What priorities would you like to see included in San Jose's housing element? Joanna?
Thank you. So, I think first and foremost, we have to acknowledge that housing, jobs, transportation, and equity are really all intrinsically linked. The housing element is a really great opportunity for us to meld the priorities of the San Jose Climate Action Plan and the primary pillars there related to housing. We have to focus on strategic infill, densifying the city to accommodate many of our existing and our future neighbors. We have to make homes affordable and more efficient, which also ties into issues of equity. And we have to make sure that our housing is located in places that also facilitate working in our community, and that our buildings also encourage creation of local jobs in our city again, which will help to create community, reduce negative impacts to climate change, and improve overall the vibrancy of our community and opportunities for the folks who are living in it. So, as we keep an eye on development, particularly in downtown, we have an opportunity to focus particularly on high-rise strategic infill, particularly around transit. We want to make sure that at least 25% of our large buildings are dedicated to affordable and deeply affordable units, and I see that it says "stop", so I think...
We'll get to some of those other issues, Joanna. Irene, if you're a new City Council member, what do you want in the housing element?
Job one for building more housing is streamlining the permit process. Jared Ferguson, the city's housing catalyst staffer, has stated specifically that the permit process must change. I have a realistic plan to streamline the process that includes a master plan for the permit process, consolidating fees, publishing fees in advance, and measuring and adjusting our goals to ensure that we hit them. Doing this right needs the perspective of not just the people here today, but other folks and other voices as well, developers, land use experts, permit policy experts, and others, because we need to answer questions such as how much, and how fast, and where. We need to be more inclusive of those who can help us solve these problems. Thank you.
Great. Thanks Irene. And you'll get the first chance at this next question. In 2020, San Jose voters approved Measure E. I'm sure you're familiar with it, creating a transfer tax which has already generated significant funding for affordable housing. However, even Measure E wasn't enough to meet the goals for affordable housing development. Another option has come up, and it's been to increase San Jose's commercial linkage fee, which collects more funds from commercial development to help pay for affordable housing. Would you support increasing San Jose's commercial linkage fee? An outside study showed that these fees were feasible.
Thank you for the question. Our housing model is already too expensive, and making it more expensive through additional linkage fees may not be our best alternative. The way this question is framed, it ignores the perspective of commercial developers. It doesn't give voice to the impact these fees would have on other parts of the housing equation. Consulting with developers to understand if a building is built with signed tenants and has less risk, it could potentially handle more expense. But when a building is signed without tenants, the risk is substantially higher, and the risk equates to expense. Investors aren't going to invest in our needed housing unless and until we better understand their business so that we know how to motivate and achieve faster development of housing. So if we create more costs and pass those on, we are in fact part of the affordability problem.
Just a quick follow-up. Irene, which stakeholders would you talk to about this?
Including developers and contractors, everybody that's involved. I mean, we're talking about, you know, streamlining the permit process, including developers, contractors. I mean, I think the whole end-to-end gamut of what it takes to build a building. You know, land use. I mean, the whole thing.
Sure. Thanks Irene. Joanna, Measure E. And if you have questions about it, who would you talk to? What sorts of stakeholders?
Specifically about Measure E or the commercial linkage fee?
Commercial linkage fee.
Well, I think we need to talk with, we do have to talk with our large-scale developers. We also have to talk with our small developers, small business owners, and come to a solution that works for everyone. Now, my understanding is that in the time that we've had Measure E, it has generated significantly more monies towards affordable housing than the commercial linkage fee has. The numbers I heard were about 90 million to the commercial linkage fee, 6 million. And I do agree that jobs and economic revitalization is definitely part of the equation. We do want to encourage and incentivize building, commercial buildings, that are going to give opportunities to the folks who are living in our communities. So, we should also certainly be talking with Destination Home, SB at Home, and all of the organizations in our community that are really dedicated to understanding how we create an inclusive economy overall, and how we can build a system that includes housing and also includes jobs for the people that are housed in them.
Would you increase a commercial linkage fee? Would you support an increase if some data or study showed that it was effective?
It would certainly depend on the data and the study. We would also want to understand the impact that it was going to have on development of commercial buildings and its impact on the local economy. In particular, the economy of folks who we expect to serve with jobs, who would be living in some of our affordable and deeply affordable units in the community.
Thanks Joanna. Our next question, we are going to turn over to one of our community partners. That is Carmen Brammer. She is from the Black Leadership Kitchen Cabinet. And Carmen, do you want to go with your question?
Sure thing. Thank you. Hold on a quick second. I just got to get my situation set up here for you guys. So, as many folks know, housing policy has been rooted in systemic racism at every level of government, from discriminatory lending practices to exclusionary zoning. And data continues to show that black people remain behind other races for many social determinants. And in this county, we see that show up in areas like incarceration rates and homelessness. If elected to the City Council, what tangible housing policies would you prioritize to improve equity for San Jose's black community?
Joanna, if you'll take that one first?
Sure. In answering this, completely appreciating that housing really is a platform for equity and inclusion, and really a framework for creating the communities that we want to see. First and foremost, we need to increase the opportunities for black homeownership. We need to create down payment assistance programs, make sure that we're increasing access to affordable credit. We should also be investing in historically distressed areas with opportunities like tax credits to the folks who are going to be raising those areas up. And we should stop perpetuating racism. We should be encouraging mixed-income communities. Again, we have a great opportunity for that, particularly in our high-rise buildings, where we can really create a diversity of income-level units. And we have to invest in affordable rentals as well, which goes to the complex issues that we were just talking about before in terms of Measure E and commercial linkage fees.
Thanks Joanna. Irene?
It is unconscionable that historically cities, counties, federal-level housing legislation has marginalized black people. I pledge to work directly with the county on their first-time home fire program and implement my incremental ladder of housing success rental voucher program that'll help keep families housed. That said, let me explain a bit of a broader approach. As we look at our current housing policy, I'd like to focus on two areas in relation to your question. One is, take specific direction from our Office of Racial Equity to critically examine our own current policies. And then number two, where there are disparate impacts, we can create policies to take corrective action.
Thanks Irene, and thanks so much Carmen. Appreciate those questions. We're going to move on to a couple of questions about an issue that's central to many people's experience in the Bay Area, homelessness. And when you look at public opinion surveys, it is one of the most pressing issues, regardless of where you are in the Bay Area. Very difficult, very serious, and San Jose District 3 sees that upfront quite a bit. So, Irene, we'll start with you. Thousands of city residents sleep outdoors each night, setting up tents and erecting temporary shelters of their own. Many housed neighbors complain about encampments, but homeless residents typically don't have anywhere else to go. Some people have argued that if you give some sort of shelter and make it available, then unhoused people should be forced to take it. Advocates say this raises serious practical, ethical, and legal questions. Would you support forcing people to move into shelters, and how would you propose enforcing this?
Thank you. Our parks and our libraries and our city sidewalks and our creeksides are for all of us to enjoy. My plan for housing allows for those who want to live in tents to do so at dedicated sites. I would prefer not to force anybody to live in a tiny home, but they may not live on the creeks or on the sidewalks because it's inhumane for them and it's dangerous for us. I do want to provide a safer location, free from fires, free from predators, and a place that offers security and mental health assistance and rehab options. As a former mental health counselor who worked in a triple-lock facility in a hospital for children with severe mental illness, I understand treatments and trauma. My plan employs the practice of meeting clients where they're at in tents to start with, and my plan would dedicate public or private land for immediately allowing services.
Thanks Irene. Joanna?
Thank you. Let me be clear. There is no legal authority to move people into a designated tent city. There is no one in our community today who has the authority to do that. And what that would look like is something I don't even want to consider. So, no, I do not support the idea that we should be forcing people from one place to another, and certainly not to a giant tent city. No. We do need to invest in dignified shelter and give people a place to be. We can do that legally, and we can enforce health and safety laws and other laws regarding the use of our public spaces. It is not illegal to be homeless. Martin v. Boise is very clear on this matter, and there are other ways we can compassionately and fairly make sure that everyone in our community has a place to be and gets the treatment and the services that they deserve.
Thanks Joanna. Studies show it's easier to keep people housed now than rehousing them if they fall into homelessness. The pandemic has shined a light on the housing insecurity and the sheer number of San Jose residents vulnerable to losing their homes. Many are living paycheck to paycheck, and rent is borrowed from friends, family, or simply not paid at all during this pandemic. The housing insecurity has hit especially hard on vulnerable black and Hispanic and other vulnerable communities. What can the city do to prevent displacement? And as a council member, what protections would you propose or support to ensure that vulnerable tenants stay housed and in San Jose? And that's Joanna?
Sure. Sure. So, we're talking about creating communities, and we're also talking about preserving our existing communities. So, we need to use every arrow in our quiver to make sure that we're keeping our families and our communities in place. First and foremost, we do have an effective rent control. I do support our existing rent control. We need to adopt policies that preserve affordability. That includes local actions to preserve our existing affordable housing using rental assistance programs, reinvesting in our public housing units, and the use of a small-area fair market rents to ensure continued access to changing neighborhoods for housing voucher holders. We also need to encourage more housing development to relieve the pressure on our existing housing. I do believe in District 3 in particular. We have great opportunities to develop that housing through strategic infill. We need to be engaging with our community residents before and after there are any changes to their neighborhoods. Again, preserving our communities means that, the broader community at large. And there may be opportunities for folks in existing low-income housing or naturally occurring low-income housing for them to move to a more desirable housing situation. We can be creative about this, but we need to conduct that outreach. I will stop.
Thanks Joanna. Irene, I'll give you a little extra time as well. I think you probably have something to say about this issue too.
Yes, thank you. And I'll address also Martin v. Boise really only addresses the criminalization of homelessness, and that is what we can't do. And that is what we can't do. So in regards to your question Lou, that is in particular a great question. And I have a specific plan. It's the second prong of my plan, and it includes a local rental voucher program. It's like Section Eight from the federal government, and Section Eight is a great solid program. But the week can be over a decade long. My sister's on Section Eight and it took her 12 years. That's just too long. So we can prevent more homelessness and keep more families housed by offering our own voucher program that's easier for tenants to apply for, faster to obtain approval, and easier for the housing provider to comply. This helps keeps rents affordable and it keeps families housed. And that's what's important.
How would that be funded?
Well, I think that there's a lot of money that we're not looking at, that we can reorganize the money that we have. I know we just went through a lot of money with, you know, our housing and some of the federal programs. But I know if we look at some audits, that we're going to find departments that aren't hitting their goals and their targets. And we should be able to reallocate some of that money to a program where renters really need help.
Thanks Irene. Now District Three, as you all know, includes the greater downtown, including future Bart stations and Deardon station area. In the past, San Jose City Council has endorsed goals of having at least 20% of the housing in downtown and 25% of the housing around Deardon Station affordable to lower and moderate income households. Recently, some people have claimed that affordable housing will undermine the successful rejuvenation of downtown. Where do you stand on the appropriate share of affordable housing downtown? And what, if anything, would you do to make sure San Jose meets its stated affordability goals? This is a little complex question. We'll start with you Irene, and we'll give you a little bit extra, both a bit of extra time to answer these.
Thank you. I think the better question here is how to implement a fair process across all of San Jose and D3. The current answer is our siting policy. The stated objective is to equally distribute affordable housing throughout San Jose so that resources are accessible by all. The objective has been different than the effect, and D3 right now has more than its fair share of permanent supportive housing and affordable housing. High density will be critical for D3, but concentrating one type of housing in D3 will not work. We already enjoy the most diverse housing options. We have sororities and women's shelters and halfway houses and rooming houses and permanent supportive housing and rehab and temporary tiny homes, shelters, home key motels. We have it all. We literally have it all. And it is what makes us stronger. However, I want to use San Jose's stated siting policy to verify that D3 can maintain its diversity without an overconcentration.
Do the numbers 20% and 25% ring true to you? Is that too high or too low?
When I look at the, when I look at the Housing Department's siting policy, and I look at that they took it through, through the the census tracts, and then they organized the census tracts into three different tiers. And they look at how should we organize the housing based on the three tiers? And I think, okay, so there's a couple of districts out there that don't have any affordable housing, and D3 has quite a bit of it. So if we're really going to walk the talk and make sure that folks that are in affordable housing have access to a wide variety of resources, then we have to allocate it like the siting policy is staying. And right now, we're not allocating it correctly. It's just, it is just being put primarily in D3, some in D5, and then not in other districts.
Thanks Irene, appreciate it. Joanna, your turn. You touched on this a little bit before in your opening.
Yes, so you know, I think first we should talk about what affordable housing means here in San Jose. And remember that that is, I believe, accommodates 30 to 60% of the median income, which is very high in San Jose. So affordable housing really is a broad range of housing options. And I think that's really key. I agree that we should absolutely be working towards making sure that the entire city does its fair share here. But I do agree that downtown can lead by example here. One of the options, yes, that I mentioned before is making sure that in our large high-rise housing developments, we can be, we can be requiring that a percentage of those units be dedicated to affordable housing, 20, 25%. And by focusing on really strategic infill downtown in District Three, we can become, I understand, really net positive in housing, just in our district. We should also be doing what we can to show our other districts what can be done and how they can participate. I've seen other cities get groups of folks together and interns to do strategic plans, citing three, three housing projects in each district based on the amenities and community layout of those specific districts. We can do that here. We have a great program through Communiversity that could work with our planning department to do, to do just that and really put the moral pressure on our, on our other districts and even the county, and showing the realm of what's possible.
And so you're okay with those, with those percentages?
I absolutely support a, a program where our large high rises would be dedicating 20 to 25% of their units to affordable housing, yes.
Thank you Joanna. This is the rapid fire round. Since there's two of you, I think we can give one word answers for this, but I want to give you a little bit of an opportunity to say why you, you support the position that you support. These are some short questions. And you're welcome to answer with, with one word if you might. And Joanna, we'll start with you. A proposal called the Community Opportunity to Purchase Act, or COPA, would give certain organizations like nonprofits a first shot at purchasing some residential properties when they go up for sale. The act is designed to prevent the loss of affordable homes and avoid displacement of residents. If you're on city council now, would you support or oppose COPA?
I would not support COPA. I am concerned that it would, might have the opposite impact that it's intended to have and actually tie up housing instead of helping to free it up. This is why we lifted Prop 13 across the state to make sure people can move out, so we can allow new people to move in. And I would, I would welcome opportunities for, for nonprofits with funding to pursue these opportunities on the same grounds as any other investor. And, and I would, I would certainly look into additional proposals or policies around those, those parameters.
Sure. Irene, do you support or oppose a COPA plan? Why?
I oppose the COPA plan. My biggest concern, I just recently had a a Zoom meeting for D3 regarding COPA and the impact that, that we see is going to happen on the missing middle. When I talk to Jean Cohen and I say, I know, I know where I can go to for the high rises and the really expensive housing. And I know where I can go for help to understand the extremely low income housing. But I don't know really who represents, who helps the missing middle. And my concern with COPA is that it will take away naturally occurring affordable housing and, and remove those, remove them from the market, and the middle won't have access to them anymore.
Great. Okay, second question. Irene, you get to shoot first on this one. Would you support a multifamily housing development that is in compliance with city policies and standards, even if neighbors come out in full force to oppose it? And we've all seen San Jose City Council meetings where neighbors come out in full force.
Yes. So the answer to this is it depends. And what it depends on is how the city and, and the departments work with the community. Is this a surprise? If it's a big surprise, the community has every reason to react. Has the community been brought along and told what's happening? Are they, are they informed? Are they part of the process? I think that makes all the difference in the world. When people react so out in force, as you say, a lot of it comes from fear. So if we can talk about what, what, what are the ways to address the fears and get underneath all those concerns, then we can bring people along. And perhaps we can get rid of a lot of the immediate resistance. But that is really dependent on the city.
Joanna, you have a packed city council chamber. What do you do? I think you're still muted.
I don't know how that happened. Thank you. And it, I think it depends on what aspect of the development neighbors are opposing. I do emphasize again, we're, we're not just building housing, we are building communities. And we do want to facilitate community buy-in as much as possible. You know, from my perspective, it's paramount that we initiate communication with neighbors and neighborhoods, neighborhood leaders early to understand what kind of opportunities new housing might bring to existing communities. Maybe this housing development has an opportunity to create more public space or a new park. Maybe it's an opportunity to fix an existing traffic problem or increase walkability. And we then have an opportunity to understand the community's preemptive concerns. Will it negatively impact traffic or parking or privacy? And we can assuage those early on to really create that, that community investment on the front end.
Another issue that's come up in recent years are the viability of mobile home parks. For example, West Winds in San Jose is under some consideration for redevelopment, although that looks to be postponed at least for the near future. But mobile home parks, as we know, are naturally occurring affordable housing. Many families of color live in these mobile homes. City Council voted to create a mobile home designation in the general plan and to rezone all the mobile home parks to make it harder to convert them to other elements. But the city has yet to do so. Do you believe that this is the best course of action to preserve mobile home parks? Joanna?
This is a tough one. And striking the right balance between production and preservation is, is, is a really tough one here. These mobile home parks, many of them do represent a great opportunity to increase the number of housing units. If, if these measures were a means to incentivize developers to give opportunities to the folks currently living in those mobile home parks to have another form of permanent housing on the same site, maybe a unit in one of these very large developments, I think that would be a really positive thing. And we could, we could leverage a space that's maybe providing housing for 100, 100 families, 100 units to many multiples of that on the same site and make sure that nobody is displaced.
Irene, as a city council member, do you support more, more protections for, for mobile homes from development?
Well, I, I do like the idea of preserving natural according, naturally occurring housing that is low cost. But to Joanna's point, I, I think, how else can we better utilize that land? And it's not really up to me because I don't own it. But if, if there's a possibility to be inclusive with the current residents as well as increase the amount of housing that is on that property, I, I think that that would be a great idea. But again, this is all, it's all buried in the details.
Sure. Okay Irene, we'll start the next question with you. This one comes from the Black Leadership Kitchen Cabinet. Do you support the creation of policy that would address historical harm toward black people around issues of housing and homelessness?
I think that this is a fascinating question, and I think that my focus on figuring out how we can focus on first time home buyers, support home buyers, do the rental voucher program. That is all policy in support of helping the black community. If there are other ideas and ways to approach it, I'd love to hear more specifics.
Joanna?
Yes, I do support the creation of that kind of policy and would also look forward to investigating how exactly we could do that.
Super. San Jose was exploring opportunity housing, which was preempted by California Senate Bill Nine. Now, this new state law allows, requires cities to allow two to four homes on properties previously restricted to a single family home. It also allows for lot splitting. Some cities are trying to undermine SB Nine. Read about them and seen them on television by imposing restrictions that make it harder for property owners to use the law. San Jose City Council, however, has called for making it easier. Do you support or oppose local rules that make it easier for people to take advantage of SB Nine? Joanna?
One point of clarification on this point, I do want to understand, we mean SB Nine as we, as we currently implement it in San Jose, correct?
Correct.
So SB Nine is the law, and I do think that we need to, again, facilitate the, facilitate the production of housing where we can and streamline building processes. We also need to balance that against making sure that we're creating cohesive communities. So I absolutely support streamlining processes in terms of making sure we have clear design guidelines, clear restrictions on, on how SB Nine can be implemented that are the subject, that were subject to community input. I think the faster we can understand what the parameters are, the easier it is to implement those parameters. And, and it will make it easier for homeowners to understand whether or not it's worth their while to take advantage of this, of this, this law.
Sure. Irene, SB Nine?
Well, SB Nine is the law, and San Jose, it's, it's a new law. So San Jose is still trying to figure out how to make it work more effectively. So I'm all for streamlined processes, and if that means it makes it easier, then we have to, we have to put those processes in place so that people know what those parameters are, so that there isn't any guessing.
Okay, so neither of you want to exempt San Jose because mountain lions can crawl through the streets sometimes, correct?
No, it's the law.
Good. Okay, next question. Irene. Senate Bill Ten makes it easier for cities to choose to upzone certain properties and allow development of up to 10 homes per parcel. Would you support or oppose the city pursuing such upzoning in certain places?
So my understanding is that the city of San Jose opted into, well, you can't opt into SB Nine's law, but they opted out of SB Ten. So that, that is not an option currently.
Joanna?
And that was not my understanding.
It's an optional law. I mean, city can opt in.
Right.
Yeah.
Right. So I think the key about SB Ten is that it does give the city a voice in determining where it chooses to upzone and how. So yes, I do support, I do support that, that freedom and flexibility that SB Ten provides. And this needs to be done responsibly and in partnership with the communities.
Yeah. And just to be clear, it is, it is something, a tool that cities can use if they choose. And that would be a local decision.
Right.
And here's the last question on our lightning round. For you Joanna, to start, in general, should San Jose support state actions that hold all cities, including Silicon Valley's smaller, more exclusive communities? Should San Jose support accountability for these cities to meet their planning and housing goals?
Yes.
Irene?
I, I think, again, it depends. To me, this seems like, I know that San Jose is big, but it's but it's, this seems more like a county responsibility. So it's kind of a discussion, a collaboration that you have with the county that says, hey, you know, it looks as if San Jose is taking the hit for this. How can you county, as the oversight for all this, work with all the other cities in conjunction with San Jose?
Great. Okay, so we've reached that time for closing statements. And Irene, we'll, we'll start with you. You'll have a minute to, to make your closing pitch and let folks know out there a little bit more about why they should vote.
Okay, thank you. Thanks Lou and everyone who is here tonight. I opened this forum with a call for housing collaboration and more expansive perspectives because the housing crisis in San Jose deserves it and the solutions to it demand it. This forum is full of smart, committed people asking legitimate questions of me as a candidate. But this discussion should include a wider variety of voices, including private market oriented voices. So that when we come up with solutions, they're holistic, they're able to scale, and they can be implemented immediately. I thank the sponsors and the organizers and I hope that everyone sees the value in collaborating for complex housing issues and the advantage of 33 years of housing experience to redirect our housing strategy. Thank you.
Thank you Irene. Joanna?
Thank you. Thank you also for having me here tonight. My family immigrated to San Jose over 100 years ago. My great grandparents came here as fruit ranchers and grew cherries and apricots here in San Jose, where they raised their three kids while supporting their families back home in Italy. A lot has changed in the last 100 years. I've been lucky enough to remain connected to my family here in San Jose and I hope that my three kids will also be able to do the same and move back home here when they're adults with their own kids, hopefully. Housing is at the center of our connectivity as a community, as a community, as a broader family. And it's my job to bring people and organizations together to overcome our differences, to solve complicated problems. I'm interested in one thing and that's finding solutions that work for everyone. And the housing crisis is at the, at the center of our challenges right now. And I hope to have the privilege to lend my skillset to bringing solutions to our city.
Thank you Joanna. Again, Irene Smith, Joanna Rao, two candidates for D3 in San Jose City Council. Thank you so much for coming. Running for office is not an easy job and I think our audience needs to appreciate that there is a lot of hard work and dedication that every candidate wants to do some good for their communities by putting themselves forward in these campaigns and in these types of forums. Want to thank all of our, all of our sponsors as well. And want to say, support these local nonprofits and your local journalists who bring you these important forums. It's really a great honor to be here and it's a, it's a wonderful thing to have engagement with the community and to probe these serious issues of housing in San Jose a little bit more deeply. The recordings of this forum are going to be posted online at the SV at Home Action Fund's YouTube page. And before we sign off, I'm going to turn it back to Regina Williams, our executive director at SV at Home and the SV at Home Action Fund. She's going to share some works. Thank you again, I'm Lou Hanson from the San Jose. And Regina, tell your first.
Thank you so much Lou. I really appreciate you and, and your graceful moderation of our event tonight. So thank you to our moderator, Lou Hanson. We are putting up a very simple three question poll and we'd like you to ask you to fill it out at this moment. I just want to say thank you to our candidates, our interpreters. We hope this forum has helped you learn more about housing issues and the candidates and helped you to be more informed as a voter. Thank you to all of our co-hosts, those folks who are working in and for the community helping us reach more voters on such critical issues like housing and homelessness. This was the third in our series of five forums this spring. So we invite you to come to our other forums as well as hear from candidates from other local races. And I appreciate all of you for sharing space with us tonight and doing so respectfully. So with that, I'll say thank you again and have a wonderful evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.